Board Chair if she was so inclined.
Okay, so Seth is nominated. Lisa, do we have a second?
Kristen Ross, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Well, okay, congratulations Lisa, Board Chair, and I now turn it back over to you, so.
Uh, nominations for Vice Chair.
Maybe I'm trigger happy, but I'd be happy to nominate Jim if he would be so inclined to carry on with the duty, but not so sure. How he feels.
So Jim, um, isn't with us.
Okay.
There's two new board members actually from West Rutland. Along with Tom.
I didn't have any Tom.
No. Thanks, thanks for the nomination, but I, uh, I don't have the temperament for that. But maybe we should go around and everybody introduce themselves. We have and who we don't have, and is everybody on now, or? Because Proctor has some new members also, correct?
We don't. We have two openings, Tom, but no one ran, so actually we just put out. The, um, invitation to submit letters of interest, so currently you just, it's just me. So from Poltony, I think it's, everyone is the same. So we have Kristen Ross, Kristen Whitman, Nate, and Seth. And from West Rutland, we have Tom. And then we have two, um, new members. Jessica Grabowski, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes, it is.
And Mike Mosher.
Welcome to the new folks. Thank you for running and, and volunteering your time. We appreciate you.
So we're still seeking a nomination for Vice Chair.
Seth.
So Tom nominates Seth. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Nate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
I kind of like that child's opinion.
Any opposed? Welcome Seth as Vice Chair.
Thanks.
Um, clerk. I would nominate Kristen Ross as clerk. She's done a lovely job of helping us take minutes. And I know how much she enjoys that.
And I am.
I would second that.
All right. Seconded by Kristen Whitman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the remaining members of the board, we will fill that out. Everyone received the template in their, um. So remaining members would be Nate, Tom, Michael, Jessica. And Kristen, uh, Whitman. Uh, GRCSU voting members. Historically, we, for new members, we have one. Board member from each community go to the GRCSU. So I would, I would be going from Proctor. So one person from Poltony, one person from West Rutland.
So this is Kristen from Poltony. I, um, uh, had asked if Seth would like to be that representative at least. I'm glad to be an alternate, but, um, my schedule in the fall during budgeting time is going to be a little more up in the air, so. Um, he agreed to do that, so.
Okay.
I'm glad to be alternate.
Okay. And then someone from West Rutland.
Did we normally have three? I thought it was only two from our board that went.
Yeah. Everyone, everyone has three that goes to the, um, SU.
Oh, okay. Like Mr. Mosher would like to do that.
Okay. So. Michael Mosher, Seth, and myself. Um, set the regular meeting schedule. Uh, the third Monday at six o'clock, still okay with everyone?
Okay for me.
Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we will stay, stay with the third Monday at six o'clock. Um, set the annual board retreat. Um, hopefully we can do something this year, maybe in July, so maybe that's something we could look at. Um, in April, if that's okay with everybody. All right. Um, set the date of the annual meeting. So that would be the 22nd, correct? Two twenty-two, twenty-two this coming year? Chris?
Yes, sorry, I muted.
Okay. All right, so that's. Um, and a motion to affirm the use of Robert's Rules for small boards would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, everyone should have received a copy of the VSPA Code of Ethics that you receive every year. If you can sign that and, um, at your leisure, um, drop it off at your school to go to the central office. Um, and your building administrator, I think, could probably, um, send it in with staff, so you could probably put it in an envelope and send it in with your child to the office if you have a child. Um, identify locations where agendas and meetings will be, minutes will be posted. Uh, we post at the post offices, schools, and libraries in West Rutland, Proctor, and Poltony. And affirm the choice of attorney. So a motion would be in order to continue with Chris Leopold as, um, the Board Attorney.
Kristen Ross, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, we'll continue to use the Rutland Herald. As our media source outlet. For all. Media source outlet needs. A motion will be in order to authorize the administration to request and expand available grant funds from the Agency of Education as well as state and federal funds.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. A motion would be in order to authorize the Board to borrow funds for the Unified Unified School District pending receipt of payments from State Education Fund.
This is Kristen Ross, um, who authorized to borrow.
Okay, second.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. A motion would be in order to authorize the Board Chair to sign director's orders and other documents on behalf of the Board as necessary.
I'll make a motion that the Board Chair can do that.
Second.
Kristen Ross, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Subcommittees, um. Finance Committee. I don't think we did Finance Committee last year. We all did the budget as one, so. Do you want to designate Finance Committee, or do you want to pass on that? I'm seeing head shaking, pass on that, and.
Lisa, the other boards did, the, the boards did approve a candidate for, uh, Wells Springs and Rutland Town, so.
Oh, for the SU budget?
Yeah, just, just in case, so we, the Finance Committee would decide to meet this year, they had a candidate in place.
Okay. So. Would you like to, would someone like to be the candidate? Nate?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Nate will be our, our candidate for Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Negotiations. Um, I would like to stay on negotiations. We're going to start again next month, but it's nice to have someone else. The excitement is overwhelming for committees.
Can I make a suggestion and maybe go through the committees that are there, and then maybe people will volunteer? So everybody knows what committees are available?
Sure. So we still have the Policy Committee, Buildings and Grounds, and Hiring Committee. So would anyone like to be on the Policy Committee? Kristen Whitman, aren't you on the Policy Committee?
I am, yep. I can continue to do that. Or somebody else wants to do it, either way, but I'm happy to do it.
Anyone like to be Buildings and Grounds?
I'll take that one.
Tom, okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to get in on that as well, Lisa, Seth.
On Buildings and Grounds?
Yeah.
Okay, so Seth and Tom. How about someone else on policy with Kristen Whitman?
This is Kristen Ross, I can do that.
Okay. Uh, negotiations.
I'll volunteer for that.
Okay. And Hiring Committee. We have one on there. I don't know that we've ever, we haven't done it that way, but.
Sorry, Lisa, what do you mean that we have one on there?
Uh, it's, it lists one for the Hiring Committee, but it's, we haven't been, we didn't have a Hiring Committee last year. I think that, um, as hires come through, uh, building principals have sent out to see who was available. Um, particularly the way we're doing it now with Google Meets and like that. Um, because, like I just said, on a committee, and you could sit for, you know, a couple of hours, so you have to be able to flush out some time, so. I'll put my name down and we'll kind of continue status call as it comes along. We'll send it out to the Board as we have. Is that okay with everyone?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, uh. Approval of the agenda. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I, second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. General public comments. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak to an issue that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to all business, school choice. Chris?
So we had, um, in the past, always had a cap on our school choice. It was, uh, last year, it was six in, six out. And then looking at the, uh, statute, but it technically said by February first, we should have put a cap on, you have to, on annually, so we did not do that. So what we're, I'm asking the Board to do is take a look at that tonight. Uh, my recommendation would be to look at an increase, uh, across our three buildings. Uh, from ten, to go from six, uh, in, six out, and then Poltony was eight in, eight out, to ten in, ten out. I think as we look at the interest in our schools, uh, that we, that we have to continue to grow and allow students uh, to take advantage of some of the great things we have going on, I think it'd be great, uh, to expand that opportunity, so with the approval of, you know, the Board tonight for ten in, ten out. What we do is retroactively go back to the, uh, the lottery that we had last week and just notify families, uh, of the, uh, that they have expanded opportunities.
Any discussion, concerns with, uh, upping it to ten? I think if you remember last year, um, building principals came and, um, particularly Joe from Poltony had, uh, asked us to increase this year to ten. Um, and we have had a great deal of interest, I think, in our, in our building, so. If there's no discussion, a motion would be in order to increase school choice to ten in, ten out.
I'll make the motion to increase school choice to in, ten out.
Second.
I just want to clarify, just have a clarifying question real quick before we vote. Is that ten in, ten out for all schools, or specifically for Poltony, like, or, or, because I know we had different numbers? Each school, okay, thanks.
So it'd be for ten for West Rutland, ten for Proctor, ten for Poltony?
Yep, so motion for ten in, ten out for each school. For each.
Okay, second by Tom. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, um, websites. So I don't know how often board members go on the websites, but, um. So, I guess I thought when we hired the website person, the websites would look a lot different, and I also thought there would be some level of continuity, particularly across Quarry Valley. I mean, I understand we belong to an SU, and Wells Springs and Rutland Town might have their own look, but particularly within Quarry Valley, that there would be some level of I, continuity, so the tabs would be similar, the information would be similar, and I feel like that, um. I guess they're kind of sloppy, in my opinion. There, there's really no other way to say it. And as I just pulled up, um, Proctor site now, and I go, it doesn't even list the Quarry Valley Board. It lists Rutland Town and the GRCSU. And, um, I have had a conversation with Greg this week, so some things have got changed, because for the longest time, Rutland Town information was on Proctor's, um, site, so I guess I just, maybe it's just me, that I have a higher expectation since we designated someone for this, um, and the SU person wanted it to be funneled through the SU when everything had been local at each board level, or each school level, where things had moved a little smoother, and I just don't feel like there's a, um. I guess I just don't see them as this polished look that I had anticipated there being, so. I, I don't know. That, that's just my perception when I look at them. And some of them look good.
Lisa, I, I would concur. I've been kind of watching these about every four months. I kind of look on, and I would say all the same things that you said. I, I, I feel like if I'm, you know, I pretend to be a naive towns person, or a potential prospective parent wanting to come into a particular town and a particular school. You know, you're not necessarily going to be drawn to, oh, I want to be part of this supervisory union. I mean, for, you know, especially if it's, it's an incoming Vermont to Vermont move, because everyone's so focused still on local control and towns. You know, people here in Poltony don't even know what Grick Sue is still. Right, so. It, it just seems like some of the parts of the website are great, that in, some of the individual school highlights are great, but yeah, I, I would agree. I, I couldn't find stuff that I wanted to find, just for Quarry Valley specifically. Um, I, I just don't think it's well, I had high expectations as well after we hired someone, and I've been trying to sort of be patient, because I know that we, there was a lot of backlog after that person was hired, and a lot goes into these, and then with COVID and everything else, so. I'm starting to get back to being more impatient again, so I would like to see movement on this in some way, so that's my two cents.
Yes.
So do we think at the next meeting, maybe, Chris, we could have Greg and perhaps Shannon join us at a Quarry Valley meeting? And I'm sorry, Seth, go ahead.
No, if they're going to join us, that's fine. I, I just also, um, typically I'm looking at the websites from either, uh, a, a actual computer or an iPad, and just a week ago, I went onto one of them just on my phone, and, and the format's not very nice on the phone either. I mean, it's, it's not one of those situations where things are overlapping on each other, but it's, it's just a very there's a ton of blank white space, and it, it's just a very unattractive, unappealing, from a marketing perspective, uh, so that's all.
Yeah, I guess I just feel like there's a lot of things going on in every school, and every time I see where it says no upcoming events on a slide, I find that to be a big turnoff. And the other piece is, um, I think that there are loads of pictures being taken even during COVID about things, that I'm really not that interested in seeing stock photos on the websites. I find that to be, um, really putting off, and I, I have had people that are looking not specifically at Proctor, but at schools within Quarry Valley, and have just said how it's really very difficult to navigate and find information, so, um. I, I, I think it might be a good idea to have them come to a meeting if other people think that would be. And maybe they could kind of explain what the timeline looks like, or, or if this is what, what the end product is going to be.
Uh, the, the other thing, sorry, Chris, the other thing I'd like to hear on top of that is, um, what the mechanism is. So is it, is there someone designated in each building to be the funneler of information? And if that person, you know, a lot of our front offices are, have fewer and fewer staff, and, you know, they, they have a lot to do. Um, same with principals, so, you know, maybe we should think about if that is the issue, getting the information is, is a huge piece of this, but it's not the only piece. Maybe we need to think about a different alternative process to do that. And Kristi, it looks like you wanted to chime in too.
Address it. Um, so the, right now, the way the websites are, it's not local control. Like my front office, like I can email something to Shannon, but Shannon has to upload it. So I, I am going to defend the principals a little bit, just because we don't have local control over it, um, so we're just working as an SU to get some continuity, so I do think it's definitely something we're all agreeing with the board members on for sure. Um, and we do have loads of pictures that we're waiting for to be uploaded as well, but I am going to defend the schools, because it's not, it's not our front offices.
And if I can just chime in as well, um, we have had some meetings scheduled, and they were not able to happen for one reason or another. But we are using, um, our library media, media specialist has been the one who's trying to keep things current in regard to menus and letters and things like that. So that's where we're at.
Okay, um, I see Mike has raised his hand.
Yeah, I like that.
People raising their hand.
Okay. Um, maybe we should, we should find out if there is a way, a mechanism by which a part of the page may be under local control, so that, you know, the updated calendar events, uh, sports events, whatever, there's a portion of that of that, uh, website that, that the local principals and administrators can get into, so that might keep it more, uh, current. They don't necessarily have to do it, so that might be a reflection on, you know, them. Um, but at least it gives them a chance to say, hey, here we are, this is what we're doing, and then maybe have a more formal part that the SU does, which is, um, the heavy navigation, if you will.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Jay?
Mike, I'm going to follow that up. So I'm, I, I tend to be rather impatient, so we actually do have some local control at West Rutland. Uh, Lynn Ackerman in the office has been, been busy trying to upload some stuff to make sure, because uh, uh, with what the Board has said, it, uh, website needs to be up to date, it needs to be current. Uh, and Joe wants to make sure, Joe Harrington wants to make sure that obviously all of our practices in sports and other events are listed. So we have a, a little hybrid right now, but, um, I, I, I would say, um, that there is room for improvement.
Just one quick update from my side. After making a couple more clicks, we definitely have words overlapping each other on menus, and you can't read them and things like this on a mobile device, so it's, it's really, I would expect it to be able to handle at least all the common devices that people would have.
So I, I think we're all in agreement that the websites need work. Um, I know, Kristen, you said that this is not the end product by, by stretch. I think this, I would like to actually see a committee of some sort be formed, uh, which actually oversees not just websites, but other social media, because I think we we look at communications and how, how do we, you know, you know, work with community members in terms of, you know, uh, the local, you know, Poltony, West Rutland, Proctor, as well as the Greater Rutland County community, in terms of the great things that are going on. Uh, I think, you know, the mechanism is not working. Um, I think there are a variety of reasons. I know that we have some locals, some not local. Uh, it's inconsistent at best. I think it, uh, so I think we really need to tighten this up. I've had numerous conversations with, uh, Greg and, and Shannon about this. Uh, but I, I would like to see a more formal approach, and I think if, you know, I, I have no problem giving up another evening, uh, or two, um, with uh, some board members and administrators, turns out, better do this, because, uh, as I said, the website is, is like the first stop for a lot of people. And I think there's a lot of things we can do. We can, you know, embed video, we can embed all sorts of, you know, media, it's just about, you know, really make it highly attractive, so when someone comes in and says, hey, let's see what's going on one of our schools, they really look at it and say, that, that looks great, like I want my kid to go there. Uh, they're very proud of that. Uh, and I think, I said, you know, our community members have just passed a budget, but I think they want to see what they're getting for, their money's worth, and I think, you know, when they look at the website, they're not seeing that, so I think it's a way for us to do it, and, you know, I think, um, so I'm not trying to throw more work on our plate, but like I said, I would welcome the inputs. Um, I think it'd be a more hands-on approach from, you know, like I said, you know, board members or administrators, and really kind of iron this out, and we can have, uh, if we spend as much time, you know, as we do with policies, we do with this, I think we could really get the websites nailed down, so.
I was just going to chime in, um, that I, I fully support that, and I know we've, I haven't been on the Board that long, but we've had this conversation many times, but if it really comes down to a short staff, I, I see this as an opportunity for our students. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we can't reach out to them or get them involved to be doing some of this legwork, but this would be wonderful for them, like Chris talking about embedding video, things like that, I mean, we know that students in our schools would be great at some of this, so maybe we can see it as an opportunity.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea. I think there just needs to be some kind of formal manner in which that would happen, and who the one person is that would oversee that um, in, within the building to
Right.
uh, push the button that's, that says that whatever we're uploading is A-OK. Mike, did you have something else? No, okay. Um, so are you suggesting, Chris, that we form a committee, um, along with, uh, Greg and Shannon, building administrators, and a couple Board members? Is that, was that your suggestion?
I, I think that would be beneficial, yes.
Okay.
I think we have a lot of, I think we have a lot of good ideas here. I think, you know, welcome to feedback, but a more formal process as opposed to uh, taking notes here once a month. I think if we could meet, you know, once, twice a month, just continually review the the website and offer suggestions, feedback, and then, you know, have a better understanding. The website and offer suggestions, feedback, and then, you know, have a better understanding of the. Uh, mechanisms, you know, that in place. I think we can really design a process and I think we can. Parlay this into, I think as Chris has said, great student opportunities. Um, as well, so.
Okay, so are there a couple of board members that would be interested? In giving up another evening to set with. Building administrators, Greg and Shannon to. You know, kind of create a formal process about how that would happen in each building and. And how there would be that level of continuity and. Uh, I get across all buildings and that it would look. Accessible and professional, I guess, on whatever device it is that you're looking on.
Lisa, can we add a sort of a subcommittee to our list there? Because I think this goes beyond just like.
Justing.
Yeah, okay. So like even on social media stuff. Consistency there too. I mean, there's a lot of stuff happening right now with people. Getting in trouble on social media and including board members. So, you know, across the country, that's been in the news a lot. So. You know, it'd be good to sort of. Combine. You know, some, some, some uh, communications effort, I think would be good.
Would it be appropriate?
So we could, what if we said? A communication committee and that would look at social media website. So a couple, a couple people interested in.
I don't really think I'm an expert, but I'd be willing to be on the committee and offer feedback. I I don't have that expertise, but. I will do that.
You will be by the time you're done with the committee.
There you go.
And this is Joe Harrington. I wouldn't mind being on that also. I obviously technically, that's not a strength of mine, but. You know, I do deal with a lot of issues with communication and, uh, you know, I've had my own concerns with the website and, uh. So I I wouldn't mind sitting in on that also.
Absolutely. And I think that, um. Building administrators, you know, should definitely be a part of this or. You know, designate who they want to attend, but I I just want to make sure we have at least two, um. Two board member settings. So I I foresee it being a couple of board members, building administrators, Chris. Greg and Shannon. So you kind of have all the other players at the table. So.
I, Kristen Ross, I I'll volunteer to at least, um, especially if we can. Start these meetings sooner rather than later, that would be good. I think the sooner we can, you know, if we have some time in the summer. To kind of work through some of this stuff and maybe before the school year is over, get some. I would like to hear from teachers too, especially those who. Maybe have some technological knowledge as well that would like to have some input, um, and who could potentially identify students maybe. To to, like Kristen said, do some of the actual. You know, future work on what keeping things up to date that's happening at the classroom level or the grade level or whatever would be appropriate. So that would be, I think, pretty cool to start that off in the fall and offer that as sort of something students could be involved with.
Okay, that sounds great.
I'd be happy to join as well.
Okay, so I I think it's uh, building administrators, Kristen Whitman, Kristen Ross, Greg, Shannon. And Chris. So, um, I'll leave it at that and allow Chris to uh. Put some dates out there with all of you to arrange your first meeting. All right, thank you. Uh, the second or. New business is graduation end of year activities. Who wants to address that?
So I I'll quickly address this and I, then we can let the building administrators fill in, I guess. So. We're just giving up brief updates. Um, we currently do not know what the guidance is going to look like for the end of the year. Uh, we do expect, I know, I think we've all kind of heard. Um, if you follow Dan French, Governor Scott, they're they're tweeting, you know, these, you know, these. Uh, things out about, you know, social distancing possibly being minimized, you know, to the high school from six to three feet. Um, and what that may look like. I know that you've you've heard their aspirations statewide about in-person learning. Particularly as we move towards the end of the year. Uh, we met, you know, I've met with both the elementary and the seven to twelve principals last week. Discuss graduation and we felt that, you know, we look at what we did last year. I think uh, across the board, I think we did a great job of. Um, considering the circumstances, recognizing our seniors and our. Our sixth graders and our eighth graders for their accomplishments. Um, and provide them with as nice of ceremonies as we could possibly have, considering circumstances. Uh, I think that moving forward, we we have a template from which to work from. Um, but we know that obviously for, you know, we would like to see more. Families, if possible, be able to attend ceremony, you know, if we could, obviously we could do that in a. Safe and responsible way that still meets the the guidelines. So. Um, a lot of it today is just really just say what we are working on this, um, that we are waiting on guidance. I know that, you know, senior parents are anxious because they want to know what the end of the year is going to look like. Uh, particularly, you know, graduation, um, and as we have more details. We will provide that with them. Uh, I know that there have been some questions about prom and end of year dances and. You know, along those lines, as of right now, we don't see a way which we can. Uh, do a prom or an end of year dance. Obviously, that guidance may change. We have heard of some uh, SUs. Who are proposing the idea of having a prom on graduation night, which I I don't necessarily agree with. I think that's a recipe for disaster because. Once they have that diploma in hand, they're really no longer ours. And so it's just, I think, you know. If the senior group want to have a dance, once they've deployed, they can do whatever they want. I mean, you know, all summer long. They can have a dance every night of the week if they really wanted to, uh, we could really stop them. But um, I think we really just to look at, you know, recognizing that. Uh, for our senior class, I I know we have sixth grade, eighth grade, you know, as well, but, you know, really for the senior class, this is the. Culmination of a career that they've been looking forward to for a very long time. And we're still committed to make it as special as possible this spring, you know, considering the circumstances that. If we can't do a dance, we'll find other ways to provide some end of year activities which they could still. Uh, unify and and remember, you know, remember that, you know. You know, that the spring of twenty twenty one wasn't all just a kind of a lost cause for them. It's been a rough year for our. Our kids, you know, so we just want to make sure they end on a positive note. And our principals are committed to that. So I don't know if any of the principals want to add. To any of that's, um. Have any thoughts? Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
Uh, so I met with uh, the senior class officers a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Harrington and I did, and they had some ideas. Uh, and we reiterated what Superintendent Sell said was we are waiting for more guidance somewhere around April first. Uh, once we get that guidance, then we can circle back up with them. Uh, and try to have the student voice in graduation uh, as we move forward. And I also noticed in my uh, Friday newsletter to the families. That we would be doing an eighth grade graduation, uh, or sorry, eighth grade promotion. Uh, let me be clear on that, eighth grade promotion. Uh, before the end of the school year, uh, we just need to again wait for guidance on that. Thank you.
So for parents that are listening, what I'm hearing is that at our April meeting, um, we anticipate. A building administrators coming along with Superintendent Sell with some kind of plan. For graduation.
Well, well, yeah, so a more clear picture of what graduation will look like at our next board meeting, correct?
Okay. And do we realistically think graduation could be inside? I mean.
Uh, realistically, probably not. I I think just given the the guide insight, so I think the outdoor ceremony would be the. The best option, to be honest. I think, you know, in looking at uh, what West Rutland, Polley and Proctor were able to do last year. Uh, I think we could, you know, you could find ways of having uh. Families sit in pods, uh, you know, in areas instead of could still see their kids. And in fact, I think I just speaking on behalf of. Uh, the Proctor for last year, the kids, the kids really enjoyed it. And I think there are some new traditions that we. Started that some of the kids want to see continued. Some of them not so much, but some of them yes. So.
Okay, so at the April meeting, we'll await your, um, the guidance and your suggestions. Um. All right. Okay, Joe, thank you very much. All right, any other questions for? About graduation? Hearing none, moving on to the consent agenda, approval of minutes. And if there's no, um. Concern, we could um. Adopt or move all three sets of minutes together. The February fifteenth, twenty twenty one, the February sixteenth, twenty twenty one carousel. And the February twenty third, uh, Quarry Valley informational meeting. Is there a motion to approve all three together?
This is Kristen Ross. I move to approve all all three uh, minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by. Tom, Nate? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, abstain.
Okay.
Because we weren't in attendance for the meeting, so.
Right. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Approval of warrants uh, for new board members, warrants are sent to your email. You have the opportunity to review them. If you have questions. You can email Lewis with those questions. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve blue warrants.
Motion by Nate, second?
I, several seconds.
I'm really struggling for the seconds here tonight. All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Lisa. I just have a few items to discuss tonight. Uh, just, uh, obviously in the past few weeks, I've been finishing up preparations for the Quarry Valley. Informational meeting and the budget votes. Uh, meeting was held on February twenty third, presentations were made by myself, Louis. And our Quarry Valley administrators, Kristen Calgieri, Joe DeBanas, Kristy Cludy, Joanne Canning and Jay Slanker. Uh, we would like to thank the community members of Polley, Proctor, West Rutland for their continued support of our schools. And voting yes on our school budget. Uh, we greatly appreciate the the support. And assistance and we we hope that this continues in the future. Uh, the. We had the next round or the COVID testing took place, uh, March tenth. Uh, last Wednesday, so we are starting to see the results come in. As of right now, we have not heard of any positive results. Uh, I think, you know, staff members should have received. Probably over the weekend, uh, their results. So, uh, so things were looking good. Uh, as I said, with every, you know, each one of these tests, it is just a snapshot. It just let us know on that, on March tenth, on that day that everything is good. So we. We continue to take it on a day by day basis and just, you know, continue, you know. Address situations as they come up. Uh, vaccinations, uh, today was the first day for our vaccinations, uh, March fifteenth, which was Pfizer. Uh, we have a second round or the second scheduled date of March twenty second, which is the Johnson and Johnson. Uh, I do believe that we have additional dates, uh, March twenty ninth, and we just received. Uh, a notice today from the state that there are four more dates are open up across the state. But they're in places like St. Albans and, uh, you know, down in Bennington. So the staff would have to drive a little bit. So if a staff member was not able to get on. The fifteenth, twenty second or the twenty ninth, uh, they will have some other opportunities. Uh, for that. So the vaccine vaccinations taking place at the Rutland Holiday Inn for the GRCSU staff. Uh, and then the last thing I have really is just a copy of legislative updates. Uh, there is a lot going on in legislature, so just, uh. I've, you know, for the new board members, uh, you know, there's a report that came out a couple of weeks ago. I could send you the report number one, uh, but this is just some light reading for you. Uh, just to kind of take a look that's, you know, keep abreast of what's happening, you know, this is both the Senate and the House. But I would also just like to welcome, uh, you know, Mike Moser and Jessica Grabowski to the board and just congratulations to. Uh, Kristen and Seth and Lisa on their reelection. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to principals reports. Christie?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, you can see my principal's report. Uh, we've been having virtual things. So we had a virtual kindness assembly that our school counselor hosted. Which was very successful in grades K through four. Um, you can take a look through my report if anybody has any questions. Um, just getting through, I don't really have a whole lot. Um, I have joined the VPA. Association Committee on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. It's a newly formed committee that will be meeting bi-weekly. Um, and they are going to look across the state to increase supports into schools. So that's really exciting and something new. Um. Does anybody have any questions while looking at my report? Just trying to speed things along for you.
Yeah, I I would be interested though, if you could give a little synopsis when you come back from the VP diversity. Committee meetings. We had, um, parents come several times about that. To kind of give us a little insight what you're looking at and. Um, maybe that's a committee we're going to want to look at, um, creating as a subcommittee here, but. Before we get too far ahead of ourselves, we'll let the VPA do a little bit of the of the road work for us.
I can definitely give reports after each meeting that we have.
All right, thank you, Christie. Uh, Kristen?
Hi, everybody. Um, you also have my written report. It's quite detailed. I will highlight a couple of things from it. Um. Teachers are in the process of reviewing data right now and student work samples so that we can um, send out our summer school. Information. Uh, the dates right now are July fifth through the twenty ninth. So that's already in the works. Um, we're working on grade configurations and teacher assignments. Typically, what I'll do is have a Plan A and Plan B, and then we will discuss it as a staff. So more information will be coming for you next month. Our Sback schedules are all set for grades three through six. They will start May twenty fourth and go through the twenty eighth. Um, we've already started names, taking names for kindergarteners and for pre-K. We have twelve on our roster so far. And lastly, I'd like to say special thanks to Mr. Holcomb and the maintenance crew. Because they are going above and beyond, not only for COVID and everything that they're doing, but they're also. Um, they've helped the technology department install Peramethium boards. Uh, so that we can get things moving and I just, I just want to give them a big thank you. And that's all.
Great, thank you. Joanne?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions about my report, but um, one thing I'd like to emphasize is that we got some good guidance. From the Agency of Education about opening up our music program. And while we're not fully prepared to institute something like band in the current year. We have been talking about what it will mean and the kinds of. Space and equipment that we need to move forward. We're really excited about, um, instituting our variety night. Um, it's going to be virtual this year. It won't be in person, obviously, but. Uh, Christie is, has been very creative and trying to offer ways that the community and the kids. Can come together and and have as typical as possible, uh, the variety night, uh, and that's, that information is in the newsletter. And also I wanted to give Christie a lot of credit for the articles that she wrote. Um, about music departments and how they've evolved in times of COVID. And it gave Proctor High School a little bit of press as well. So I hope you enjoyed reading that article.
Great, thank you. Jay?
Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, uh, as everyone else has said, I've included my report. I have actually a couple of updates. We actually did get these uh, filters that go over. Uh, the horn part of our instruments. They came in the other day, uh, and uh. We actually brought the kids outside the other day to to uh, to just hear some music and. We are now following those guidelines that the state has laid out. So that's pretty cool. Uh, and I submitted this report last Wednesday and Thursday, we did get the green light that we were to start Sback testing. So. So it says that we were waiting for guidance. We have now have that guidance. Uh, our schedule because. Of being a K to twelve school, we have multiple grades that need to test and West Rutland. It it takes us about five to six weeks to do testing. So we're actually beginning next week. Uh, we already had a schedule that had been set. We put it on hold, uh, and it was delayed by about a week. Um, uh, we have just a lot of very positive things going on. So I just, uh. I think the highlights, a- as I put, we had a great faculty meeting, uh, the other day where we actually sat down. And looked at MAPS data holistically as a building. MAPS is an assessment data that all. Uh, GRCSU schools take and we are looking at our data, uh, from last. uh, GRCSU schools take and we are looking at our data, uh, from last, uh, fall to this winter. Uh, and we saw really nice gains and, and one of my goals is to start having rich conversations around the use of data, uh, not only do, you know, what do we do when we collect it, but what are we gonna do with it? So it was actually a really good feel-good moment and was led by two teachers, uh, Jamie Levy, a, a, a reading interventionist and Amy Torrey, my math interventionist. So, uh, and just want to give a shout out to all the Corey Valley teams as they begin, uh, playoffs here in basketball, uh, and we already have people asking about baseball and softball and track and field, so all in good time, uh, but lots of great things as always at West Rutland School. Uh, I don't know if anybody else or anybody has questions, uh, be more than happy to answer them.
Alright, hearing none. Thank you very much. And we will move on to personnel. Um, so you received, uh, an email this afternoon, maybe early morning, I can't remember, from Wendy that has a list of contracts in it. Did everyone receive that? That's what we're going to be looking at. Contract recommendations starts with professional staff at the top. Does anybody have any questions on that document?
Yeah, just a quick explanation on the additional class planning timeline items, please?
Okay, did you hear that, Chris?
Y- yeah, so, okay, go ahead. So, this is for, we have a, an individual in one of our schools who is out, uh, for a medical leave. And so we have these, uh, two staff members who have decided to step up and cover the class and in, uh, they go on above and beyond their own, uh, their current duties. Uh, so they are handling the, the planning, the preparation, the curriculum, and the oversight. So, uh, it, it, in the long run, it, uh, save, you know, I was, I was not saving us money, but they're really kind of helping out. So that's what the additional duties really are. Kristia, if you want to add something to that, cause it's in your building.
Yeah, I know, um, and a lot like during April break, they spend a significant amount of time planning for this unexpected um, coverage, so that is also part of the, the payment form.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I missed, I missed something. So is this, is it a staff member who's out for medical reason and these staff members are compensating?
Yeah, so the two teachers that are getting compensated, one's my behavior specialist and the other is a literacy interventionist. So they're both tag teaming to cover for a classroom teacher who's out on medical leave.
Yeah, so when they tag team, are they doing this in conjunction with one another or one at a time? Cause sixty dollars an hour is what that turns into.
Well, no, they're not getting paid for working. They're getting paid for planning for this class because they're also doing their own job as well. This is only for planning purposes.
You, okay, but however, so they're doing some work which is outside of their normal hours, which are being clocked, or that's, I'm just gonna say tracked separately as planning time, right? So, so and for each individual, it's thirty dollars per hour. If they're doing it in a team in conjunction, that becomes a sixty dollar per hour planning bill for that, uh, classroom planning scenario if they're sitting there doing it together. So I, I'm, I'm, yeah, okay.
So Seth, there might be some times where they're sitting there together, but, uh, there are a lot of times where it might be one individual's doing all the planning, uh, they, they're taking turns doing the planning.
And actually, one is teaching math and one is teaching literacy. So the behavior specialist.
You're looking at an additional thirty dollars per person per day, right? Not more, that's not, are you looking at more than that?
No, it depends. So like during April break, they came in and they were getting paid thirty dollars an hour during April break. It's not every day that they get planning hours covered. It was just to kind of get caught up. It may be like three hours a week above and beyond their current job. So it may be ninety bucks a week. Um.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna say, yeah, so, yeah, I understand. It's, it's a, basically, so, keep helping me out here. You're proposing this, uh, do, do you feel that this is a more economical option versus a replacement teacher?
I think it would be almost impossible to find a replacement teacher given this time of year um, and expecting them to just jump right in with instruction and remote teaching. And so I decided to use my own staff to do that. They're trained. They know exactly what's going on. I just thought it was in the best interest of the kids, honestly.
Okay, great, great. Now, I, I, I think I fully understand the scenario. Thanks.
Okay, so that covers the top three. Um, what about the interim union con, teachers contracts? Any questions over that?
Um, I just, this is Kristen Ross. I just, there's one highlighted there, Chris. I don't know if that was just left in for another reason or?
Uh, that's because she went to, uh, full-time.
Okay.
Well, from point nine to one point oh FTE.
So that's just highlighting the change there.
Correct.
Yeah. Alright, what about extracurricular? Are there any questions? They're all pretty much um, spring coaching contracts. Any questions on those? Hearing none. A motion would be in order to approve all contract recommendations.
This is Kristen Ross. I'll move to approve all contract recommendations as presented.
Second.
Kristen Whitman, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Alright, motion passes. Uh, resignations, and I know there's one in here, but I just closed my pile, sorry.
Yeah, I think it was the, the, the one-year contract at the Polton High School Music.
Yeah, I can't see. Erica Tyler.
Yeah, it's somewhere in the mix.
So a motion would be in order to accept her resignation.
I will make the motion.
Motion by Seth, second?
I will second that.
Second by Nate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to finance. Is Lewis here with us?
Lisa, do we want to, uh, I do have a recommendation for the, the principal position, and I don't know if we want to wait till the end, cause if you want to go to executive session to discuss and come back out, or what would you like to do?
Uh, is she here with us now?
She is here, yes.
So why don't you, um, go ahead and, uh, introduce her and if there are any questions, then, um, regarding the contract, we'll move into, we will move into executive session at the end of the meeting. But other than that, other questions, of course, you could ask, so go ahead.
Okay, so we, we had a very, uh, a, a extensive list of candidates this year for the principal position. Uh, we had close to twenty-five individuals apply. Uh, it was a very strong field. Um, and we were able to kind of whittle that down. And finally, there is one candidate who we felt, uh, was best suited for this position, uh, at this particular time. Uh, we feel, uh, you know, it's Jennifer McLemore, who currently is the assistant principal at Mill River uh, Union High School. Um, and like I said, I, you know, consider her uh, expertise, her background, her experience, and some of the things that, uh, she's been uh, been asked to do over at Mill River. Uh, she's been a part of the, the equity, uh, equity team over there, done a lot with equity work, uh, done a lot with, you know, curriculum, you know, the, uh, obviously the, you know, proficiency based, you know, just, there's just a lot. And I think it's one where, you know, uh, uh, as we sat, we looked at our candidates overwhelmingly, we all said that, you know, uh, Jen is the, the right fit. Um, it's, you know, we think, you know, uh, be great with the kids, great with the staff, uh, be the perfect person to come in and, uh, continue to, uh, take Proctor, uh, you know, advance, you know, there and work with our, the great staff we have in place and work with, uh, Jay, Joe, and Joe. Um, a- and, you know, and we had another Jay, so it would be, it would be Jen, uh, just to further confuse me, but uh, so I, I strongly recommend this candidate to the board for uh, approval. Like I said, I think we're very fortunate, very lucky to have a candidate like this, uh, at this time, so. Um, if there are any questions, uh, that's great, but, uh, but I did send the information out to you separately this afternoon, so you would have had this one get lost in the shuffle.
So if Jen's here, maybe she could just, uh, say hi to everyone?
Hi, how is everyone? That was, uh, a great introduction, Chris. Thank you very much. I'm really excited to join the team and be a part of the Proctor community if you'll have me.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jen? They're all, they're all.
Dudes, don't let me get off that easy.
Rarely are they this quiet.
Yeah, day after, you know, daylight savings, I understand.
Alright, um, like Chris said, we had, um, a pretty outstanding group and, um, i- it was nice to have such, um, such a large group and such a qualified group to, um, look at and made for a couple of long days, but it certainly well, was well worth it and, uh, quite pleased. Uh, I think Jen will be an asset not only to our school, um, but to our community as well. Jen is, uh, lives in Rutland Town. And, uh, if you served on the GRCSU, you might have met her husband. Um, Tim, uh, was a board member from Rutland Town and he occasionally came to the SU. So there's that connection, um, that we've, uh, been pretty excited about what she has done and, uh, what we see as the, uh, the future with her at, at Proctor as well as just, uh, continuing to create what I think is dynamic team, um, with our building administrators. And that's something that we, we've really focused on. Joanne? Oh, I thought Joanne had her hand raised. Um, so we will.
Uh, my, I think Mike has a question.
I think his hand has just been up since before. Did you have a question, Mike? No, I think it was just up from the first time.
You just hit it again for it to go away. If you hit the raised hand again, it'll go away.
There you go. Great, thank you. Um, so we will, um, go into, Joanne, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it keeps going up by accident. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, we will go into, um, executive session at the end of the meeting and, and discuss, um, contractual, um, agreements. Um, but thank you very much, Jen, for coming. And, uh, Chris will be in touch with you tomorrow morning and we're, uh, we're very excited to welcome you to the, um, Corey Valley team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, is, is Lewis with us?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. You're so quiet, Louis. I didn't know you were here. I'll turn the meeting over to you, Louis.
Okay, thanks. So I have three things on the agenda for tonight. Um, so the first one is approve the CRF sub-grant. Uh, so back last spring, we received CRF money, federal money to be able to pay for things like PPE, our building subs, um, maintenance supplies, technology supplies. Um, so that was one grant that came to the SU. Um, and we, what we did is we ended up sub-granning pieces of that to each of the districts, which made it easier for them to spend. Uh, they could hire the people, uh, right at the district level. They can order, make, place the orders. Um, in order to do that, just for paperwork purposes, now that the grant is complete, um, we've submitted for reimbursement. We have received all of our reimbursements for it, which was approximately eight hundred thousand dollars for the SU. I'm just doing the paperwork to clean everything up and make sure we have everything on file for the future. Um, so this is a sub-grant agreement, just saying that the SU is sub-granning this money, which is seventy-one thousand to Corey Valley, and that Corey Valley is accepting it. Uh, so I would just be looking for an approval at this level and then I'll also be bringing the same document to the SU meeting for approval and then just having signatures. Again, it's just paperwork they have on file in case we're monitored by the, the vets.
So a motion would be in order? Big suck. Motion by Nate, second?
Kristen Ross, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Proctor lawn care. Uh, so we went out to bid for lawn care for the Proctor schools last, uh, last year. Uh, it was for July. We were trying to do a three-year bid for July, starting in July one for three years. Uh, we did get several bids back. Uh, the board could not come to a consensus last spring on a vendor to choose. Uh, so in the end, we decided to just go with, um, we, we picked a vendor and decided we were just gonna give them a trial run, which was just from July one through the end of this, the mowing season, which is approximately November first or November fifteenth. Um, so I have spoken with the schools. They are happy with the service that was done. Um, and so I have spoken with the vendor and they're willing to extend the current prices for the next three years. Uh, the agreement a- and the prices were in the agenda. So I'm recommending that we just renew the contract for another three years with Carpenter and Costin a- at the same rates as the original bid from April twenty-second, two thousand twenty.
Any questions?
Um, just clarifying question, just for note taking, um, Louis, you said so starting, uh, July one, twenty twenty-one, or whenever the mowing season would start this, this current year for a total of three more years, or, or does last year count as the first year? Sorry.
Uh, s- so would it be three new years? Uh, and typically when I do lawn care uh, contracts, I do them for a mowing season, so which crosses fiscal years. The old contract was based on a fiscal year, so it ended June thirtieth. So the new vendors started July first and did the rest of the season. So I'm looking at three mowing seasons, which would be this mowing season and then two more. And then we would need to look, so, so again, they cross fiscal year, so we would be need to look for somebody to finish out the, the next fiscal year after that three years.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, any other questions? Hearing none. A motion would be in order to go with Carpenter and Costin for three years at the same rate as the prior year.
Kristen Whitman, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Kristen Russell, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and then the last item is a, a solar agreement. Uh, so about five years ago, the Proctor schools underwent a performance lease, which they, um, Johnson Controls came in and looked at all of the energy controls in both schools. Um, so they looked at lighting, heating, um, electrical, uh, and they, it was a, I, approximately like a one-point-five million dollar lease and they replaced, they did a lot of work in both schools. Um, part of those projects was to put solar panels on, on the roof, uh, I think it's just Proctor Elementary School. Um, tho- the fi- the warranty with the original installer was for five years. Um, that five years is now up, so they sent me an agreement for an annual maintenance contract to, um, monitor the, the solar outputs, um, to monitor the, the, the solar panels themselves, the hardware, uh, the software, the, the wiring and all that. Um, I have spoken with Johnson Controls, who was the original engineer of the project. Um, and I've also spoken with Sam Sun, who was the installer, the one that's gave us the a- agreement. And we don't have to do, uh, the agreement every year if we chose not to. Um, since the panels are relatively new still, I mean, we're only five years old. We could say do a, a maintenance agreement for one year and then skip two years and then do another year, just to make sure, so that we have some periodic maintenance on it, making sure that the panels are being, the, the outputs being monitored, make sure that they're still operating properly. Um, but that's really, I, I wanted to bring it to the board to make sure that, to, uh, so it wasn't, um, something, so something that the board agreed upon. Um, it is about two thousand dollars for, for one year, for a one-year contract. Um, so it's, it's not extremely cheap. So I just wanted to make sure that there was consensus on how to proceed. I would recommend doing a, a contract every one, every three years, so one year on. I would recommend doing a, a contract every one, every three years, so one year on, two years off, so that there is some maintenance.
Discussion?
Is there, this is not a warranty on product though, is it? Just a, just a service contract?
Correct.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the power company tell us whether or not we're getting anything out of them or not?
Uh, the power company would not tell us. I mean, if somebody was at, at, at the schools, we're reviewing the bills closely from month to month and, and the output and comparing it from year to year, because the output does change over the course of the year depending on the seasons. Then to some degree, you, a layman can read that data and analyze it. But it's more than just that. It's also mon, going, getting up on the, looking at the panels and making sure that there's no, there's no damage to them. That's why I don't, I don't think at this point it's necessary. We just came off the warranty, so I'm thinking like a three-year cycle. And we can, we don't have to start that cycle now. We can start it at some point in the future. We can do skip next year, do it, do it, and then skip two more years, whatever the board's pleasure is.
So do we have a current report that says all the panels are good?
Nothing that I have, but I'm, the school may have some reports.
I do not have anything.
So in this, this service agreement includes some sort of report, correct? Ninety-nine percent, I just listened you say that.
So the agreement, the agreement includes, it's a torque checking, thermal imagery, visual inspection, remover of inverter covers to check for pest damage. On-site maintenance, if there's a problem. And then after the visit, a report with recommendations. And then a whole bunch of other stuff that's below.
Then from my perspective and based off that good question about knowing where we are right now, I'm, I'm thinking it may not be a bad idea to do something now. Then we have a baseline report on, on where we are. Then we can potentially look at when we, when we engage the next contract, like you say, whether we skip a year, skip two years, get back to it. But if we don't really know the exact state of affairs right now, it simply throws a little more risk on top of what that is next year, or whenever we get around to it. And it is a, since it's a significant infrastructure investment, was at the time. When you look at the whole big picture, yes, two thousand bucks is not a cheap line item. However, prolonging that life and being able to do preventive and predictive maintenance on it, rather than having, oh, no moments, go a really, really long way. So I'm in favor of definitely doing it in some fashion. And I think that would be good to have that baseline report, but happy to hear everybody's ideas about when we want that baseline report, whether that's now or in a year or two.
So, so on the report, just one thing I will add, so there is a report that Johnson Controls was giving us for the first three years. And we discontinued that because that was a cost of about eight thousand dollars a year for them to generate a report. And that was a full report on all of the items that were changed, the lighting, the boilers. And we compared, we based the, the cost versus what we were, the end benefit of getting that report was and decided it wasn't worth it. So I think we do have some baselines and we can there is software programs that come with the installation of the, the solar where we can, we should have access to that, where we can review what the output was over the course of the year. So we can get that data. I don't know if there's been a physical inspection of the panels in the last year or not. I don't know if you would know that, Kristy, or Joe would know that.
I, I feel like I would know that, and I do not believe that has happened.
Usually, if there's nothing wrong with it, I mean, if there's nothing wrong, they, they won't come. There's no reason to, especially with such a new syst- system, it's only five years old.
Any thoughts from, I'm just gonna throw this, do we want to even maybe potentially, or can we table this?
I, I guess my question is I, I know here that I have service contracts for inspection and such. And in having that contract, if something does go wrong, there's a cost advantage to me for the repair. Is there anything like that built into that contract? I E, a panel gets shattered or something like that. Is there a cost advantage to having the contract? Versus just inviting them out to do the repair?
Uh, yes, so the, the agreement that was in the package, it, it's, there's a few pieces. So there's one hour of onsite maintenance at no cost. And then a reduced service call cost of a hundred and five dollars an hour compared to the regular a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And, and I mean, there's a whole bunch of other things that are listed. I, I, they're not all, they're not all quantifiable.
Do we need to decide this tonight, Louis?
We do not.
Could be tabled. I, I, I have to say, honestly, I didn't read through that well enough to be able to make an informed decision this evening. Is anyone else, if the board's ready to make a decision, I'm not going to hold you up, but.
I'd make a motion to table.
Yeah, I like, I like holding too, and I'll dive in a little deeper and I might maybe even ask a couple more questions about some of the stuff we do have.
Okay.
I could reach out to the vendor in the meantime to see when, last time fiscal inspection was done and what the output levels have been.
Or if they have some kind of report as well.
Okay.
So motion by Mike, seconded by Seth, to table this until the April nineteenth meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you very much, Louis. The next meeting is April nineteenth. And I'm sure we'll be meeting like this again and continue to meet this way for new board members. I would say at least until July. Hopefully by then, perhaps something will change and at some point we can meet in person and, and have a retreat. There were several policies in your packet. Three of them, it's the second reading, so we'll need a motion to approve those. So those would be the board superintendent relationship, the harassment, hazing, and bullying prevention of students, electronic communication between employees and students. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about those three policies as presented? This is the second reading for those policies. Hearing none. A motion would be in order to approve those three policies.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Nate, second.
Seth will second.
Second by Seth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So it is only the first reading for the other policies. Title one, part A parental involvement, alcohol and drug-free workplace, drug and alcohol testing of transportation employees and student drugs and alcohol. Those will then be on the April agenda. Are there any questions or concerns about those policies though, in the first reading that could be addressed and then sent back to the policy committee? Hearing none, we will see those on the April agenda then. Future agenda items. You can always email future agenda items to Chris or myself. We have the new board member set up with with S U emails, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. All right.
This is Tom from White. How did the two new ones get all their email stuff?
Neil, one of the tech guys should have reached out to them with the instructions. So if they don't, so Mike, Jessica, if you still have an issue with that, just reach out to me tomorrow or send me an email. We'll get you set up, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, if I can have a motion to go into executive session at seven twenty-two for personnel contracts.
And who do you want, and who do we need to stay?
We just need the board and Chris.
Thank you.
Kristen Ross, I move that we go into executive session at seven twenty-two to, to discuss contracts.
Second.
Second, second by Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Motion passes. So we'll wait for everyone to leave.